Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our March 7 budget meeting. Would you please join the Board and stand as we recite our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
For our audience, particularly those watching at home, we'd like to give you a preview of tonight's meeting. We will be hearing from various building leaders and department heads on their area of the budget. Our Chief Financial Officer will tell us about our revenues and reserves, and our Superintendent will provide us with an overview of the history and process used to develop the budget. With that being said, I will ask Adele to give us a budget overview.
Thank you. President Cephalletto. I'd like to just go over the first slides as a budget overview, and the slide we're looking at now, for those of you who have participated with us through the budget process in the past few years, is a slide that we started three years ago, the first year that budgets became really difficult for us to balance. So we put the budget in terms of a scale with our students on one side and our expenditures, revenues, and educational program as the balance of the scale. And that was our visual of keeping our students at the heart of the conversation, keeping the program that we lift for those students through this budget at the heart of our conversation, but balancing it with the revenues and expenditures of the budget process. So in the last three years, we had some very significant reductions to our revenues. We had to make some tough decisions to balance that side so that we could have the programs that we need for our students. So for three years, we have been using our reserve funds as the balance of that revenue. And as you will see in this budget, we are continuing to use a certain amount of reserves to balance our revenue side as we go through this process as well. On the expenditure side, we had to do quite a bit of reducing the budget over the last three years. Lots of tough decisions had to be made. We did forensic look at all of our staffing, and over the last three years, we've taken out about 60 full-time equivalent positions between teaching, administration, and support staff in our district. Those have been out of our budget. So as we're building this budget, paying it forward, it's with reduced staff. We've renegotiated all contracts to more conservative levels, and those moves have helped us get to a more sustainable place as we move forward with this year's budget. So let's take a look. Now, this is the 1213 source of budget expenditures. We don't have final figures for this year, so we are looking at last year. Pretty much, the percentages are pretty equal from year to year. They don't fluctuate too much. But as you can see, what do we spend our money on? Well, we're a people business, so we employ people to educate children. The majority of our percentages is in salaries, and the people that we employ, their salaries and their benefits. Tonight, we'll be talking about debt service, which is 6.44 percent of our budget. We'll also be talking about that other category, that 8.86 percent, which is all of our support and instructional services. And this is where we do have quite a bit of control in what we do for students. So pretty much tonight, we'll be talking about about 15 percent of the budget. The next budget workshop, we'll be talking about the bigger categories. So how do we balance these expenditures with budget revenue? Next slide again is from 1213, and that percentage of state aid, that 26.69 percent of state aid, has been reducing over the years. We are really, and that is what we've had to balance in the way that we put a budget forward. So you see, we have revenue from state aid, from property taxes. You can see a component of fund balance and reserves, and again, that is something that we have done for the last few years only, and it's the first time we've ever had to use our reserves in this budget process as a revenue. And then other sources of revenue are our sales tax, the interest that we generate, and other miscellaneous revenue in that last category. Now, there is a certain amount that we get from federal grants, and you can see that that is in a lighter font, separated from the budget process because the grants flow through codes that are separate from the budget. And I know what's on everybody's mind recently is federal government sequester. So Mr. Fischera, could you just talk to us a little bit about that topic and give us some insight on this?
Our federal grants total about $3.1 million. The two grants that have been discussed are the IDEA and the Title I grant. For us, it's, one grant is about $1.08 million; the other grant is about $550,000. Right now, the talk is about 5 percent of the grant would be lost by most recent numbers, which would amount to about $120,000 to the district. But again, these dollars that are here support and are not included in our budget number, but they're on top of that, that pay for federal salaries and supplies and materials that are used during, for those programs.
Okay.
So right now, at risk, it's about $120,000, and we'll continue to monitor that as we build the budget.
Okay. Thank you very much. So let's look at the context of our district enrollment. You can see we had exponential growth between the years of '98 and about 2003, and pretty much since 2003, we've been level. We've fluctuated a few students up, a few students down, but one of the strong points about our district is that we are sustaining our enrollment. We're pretty flat with enrollment. Many of our neighboring districts have declined dramatically. Webster has stayed pretty steady with its enrollment of students. And we've done that at a cost per pupil that is comparatively very conservative. So if you look at these, this chart, this represents the districts of Monroe County and the different expenditures of cost per pupil. And as you can see, Webster is the second most conservative district in what we spend per pupil to educate our students, but we feel that we're very proud of the fact that that's a conservative number and our programs are excellent programs. And then if we look at another lens on this, we're looking at the New York State education. This is called our financial report card. Notice that it's a few years behind. It's from 2009, 2010, so the costs will fluctuate. We don't know why it's always a little bit of lag, but it's there catching up to the figures and making sure their figures are accurate. So as we do our comparisons, we see that instructional expenditures per pupil in general education, we are lower than similar groups. These are districts that have sort of the same economy as we do, wealth ratios as we do. So we are educating our pupils more conservatively with general education than both similar groups and all public schools. Special education, we're right about flat. We're about $50 different than similar district groups and all public schools for special ed, and we know that that's a very complicated system to support our special education students. But when we look at total expenditures per pupil, we see a very good measure here that Webster is significantly below similar district groups and all public schools when we factor in all costs to the budget, instruction facilities, and everything it takes to run a school district. So again, another benchmark in terms of where we are and how we operate. We say that these are our measures of efficiency. So what does that mean to our taxpayer? We look at a true tax rate. Now, the important thing to note on this is that we have four towns that comprise our district, and when you have four different towns and different equalization rates, the only measure that's similar between them is that true tax rate. So if we look at the true tax rate, again, comparatively to the 19 districts that comprise Monroe County, we are providing an excellent education for students at a very conservative cost to our taxpayer.
Adele, if I could-
Yes.
Just reinforce it for me. That is put together by the North County School Boards and presented to us. They go through the true tax rate.
Right, and they do these comparisons in terms of where we benchmark to other districts.
Thank you.
So how have we been able to do that? In the last three years, we've taken several actions to close the gaps that have been created in our budget. As anyone that has prepared budgets for Webster knows, we are a zero-based budgeting organization, and that will be explained to you by some of our principals a little bit later of what exactly that means. We've gotten tighter and tighter on that in the way we budget for departments, building budgets, and the way we do our staffing. We'll be going over those department and building budgets this evening. Transportation, we have consolidated routes when possible, and we've done really two things. And we've extended our bus replacement time from 10 to 12 years so that we're getting more use out of our buses. We also have some very good measures in place, which I'm sure you're going to hear about tonight in terms of maintenance of our buses. I've talked to you about the use of reserves. We have a multi-year management plan. Each year, we redo that plan, and you'll hear some of those details from our Chief Financial Officer tonight about where we stand in that plan and what the schema for reserves will be going forward. We've done administrative consolidations over the years. Those of you who are working in Webster very significantly, we've reduced from an ASI for elementary and ASI for secondary to one ASI K-12. We've also reduced some of our central office positions. We've left our building staff intact, which is a very good thing, as we've had to lift the APPR with the amount of evaluations that are required. While other districts are now having to go out and hire consultants for that, we're doing that with internal people. And we've seen significant savings in buildings and grounds through our energy management savings, and you'll be hearing some details of that tonight, which is very good news for us because that's something that we've worked at for quite some time, and we're seeing some good results. So those are the actions that we've taken to keep our budget conservative. And as a context piece, I'm going to now pass it to our Chief Financial Officer, Jim Fischera, and he's going to walk you through a budget history.
Thank you, Superintendent Bervard. What you have in front of you now is the history from 2009-10 to 1314 estimate. And why do we use those figures? Really, 2009-10 is the first year that we saw the beginning of a reduction in state aid. And '09, '10, '10, '11, '11, '12, those are the years that, between those three years, the aid that was received by the district was lowered by well over $8 million. And you'll see a little bit of that, and there's a chart later on, really demonstrating where the state was with aid to school districts back in '09, '10, and where they are today. So we went through some tough years, and as Superintendent Bervard said, those are the years that we had to make some really tough decisions, and we had to reduce expenses, and we really took a hard look. And in '10, '11, and in '11, '12, where the budget was up 1 percent, and then really, we had a flat, actually, a little bit less budget in '11, '12 than '10, '11. In 1213, a couple factors played into that, increasing costs for health insurance and for retirement systems. And then you look at 1314, and you see that right now, we're sitting at about a 3.78 percent budget-to-budget increase. And that number really has played on with the increase this year in health insurance and teacher retirement system. And that figure is about $3.6 million. The difference between the 1314 budget estimate and the 1213 is about $5.5 million. So well over half of this increase is for health insurance and teacher retirement system costs that are being passed on to us that we have no control over. So when we look at our 2013-14 budget estimates, tonight, we'll be talking about the school building budgets, the support central and instructional central, our special ed budgets, technology, buildings and grounds, transportation, and debt service. On March 27, we'll talk about BOSI's benefits and salaries as we're continuing to work on those. But as you look at the pluses and minuses to the far right, you really see two, one real large area, which is benefits, $3.69 million or just over 10 and 1/2 percent. On the salary line, as Superintendent Bervard said, we had made some real good strides with reducing percentage increases, and most of our contracts right now are in the 2 and 1/2 percent range, slightly less. And one other thing that is factored in here, and there is offsetting revenues from it, is our full-day K program that will be starting in September of 2013. So there are about 14 positions for kindergarten teachers that have been built into this budget number. So right now, the budget stands at 3.78 percent above the 2012-13 budget. On the revenue side, we look at state aid, which is one of our largest revenues, and we have an increase of about $1.7 million. Our increase for state aid with the governor's run without the kindergarten aid was about $350,000. So we have factored in kindergarten aid. We do have some BOSI's aid that'll be coming in. So those aids will help offset some of those expenses that we'll be talking about over the next two meetings. Projecting an increase in sales tax of $200,000. Our rental of property to BOSI's, our interest, they've remained flat, as well as the miscellaneous revenues. The other line that we'll be increasing is our in lieu of taxes. Those are commitee or pilot taxes that we collect through a program that's not part of the property tax program. We tax at the same property tax rate, but the assessments are set on agreements through either commitee or pilots. Those will be increasing as we have a large one, just over $250,000, coming on starting next year. Superintendent Bervard talked about our reserves and that ERS reserve and unemployment reserve. We've been using a revenue from those reserves for the past three years now going on, four, to help offset some of the expenses in the budget for both ERS employee retirement system and unemployment. Right now, the law doesn't allow us to do anything with the teacher's retirement system costs from a reserve, and that's the one this year that's really a significant increase to our budget. The last item before the property tax levy is the appropriated fund balance, and that number remains the same on our March 7 estimate as it did in our 2012-13 at $5.7 million. And the last line is our property tax levy, and currently, our property tax levy is just over $91.6 million, an increase of just over $3 million or 3.6 percent. And we'll be talking about that as we get into some of the other slides in a few minutes. As we talked about state aid, and if you remember back a couple slides, what I said is in '09, '10, we started to see a decrease in state aid because the state started to cut their budget. And what this slide really shows you is in '09, '10, when the state was providing $21.85 billion to school districts, and today, their estimate for 1314 aid is $21.085. It's over almost $800 million less than we received the school districts in 2009, '10. You've heard in the past a lot of talk about what's happened to the employee retirement and teacher retirement reserves, and all that money had to be incorporated in their budget without no additional state aid. And that's why there were many years that we had to make some conservative and lower expenses that we may have thought we really wanted to do, and it really came in program and in staff. So there were tough decisions made over the last three years. The hope is that aid will continue to come. Right now, the governor's proposal calls for about $800 million in new aid to school districts, but there's still about $250 to $275 million that has been unallocated, and the hope is that that money will not be allocated in grants as the governor has originally proposed, but will come to school districts in the form of general operating aid to be used for the operating expenses that we continue to see grow. I think I've touched upon Slide 15 as I've gone through it. It's there in text if you want to go back and read through it. The same thing with Slide 16, which are all those revenues. Page 17, you'll see the calculation for the tax cap, and the tax cap formula for 1314 is very similar to that of 1213. There are a few modifications, but essentially what it does, it starts with our real property tax levy of June 30, 2012, which was last year's final levy, and that number was $88,509. The state also provides us with what's called a tax-based growth factor, and that's the factor that gets multiplied times the 2012-13 property tax levy. And our number this year is .74. Last year, it was .31. So when you think about .74 times $88 million, it generates $650,000 that can be added to the levy as we build our property tax levy limit. There are adjustments that get made for pilots receivable, both in the 1213 year versus 1314. Also, our capital tax levy, which is the portion of money that's included in our budget from debt service less building aid that the district receives. So those factors are added and subtracted in. We then have a 2 percent allowable growth in our tax levy. And that, once we get to that number, the last and the really interesting exclusion that is in part of this formula is that for pension costs. And as we talked about the teacher's retirement system, the increase in the percentage in this coming year, 1314, is 4.41 percent. Current rate is 11.8. The projected rate is 16.25, a 4.41 percent increase. So by law, we're eligible to include in our factors 2.41 percent of our pension costs. That amounts to a million, just over a million three. So when we get to the bottom line, our property tax limit plus exclusions is 92.3 million dollars or 4.28 percent. That's what the district is eligible to have for a property tax levy. Currently, our proposed property tax levy is $91.6 million, a 3.6 percent increase from the previous year. One thing I'd say is this is not the property tax rate. It's different. This is what we can raise in the levy that gets split up across all property and assessment in our town. So when we look at that property tax levy, as I said, a $3.1 million increase, 3.6 percent. Looking at that eight-step formula, we could have went to, we could be up as high as 4.28. We're currently at 3.6. As we continue with our process, these numbers will change. Based on, right now on these numbers at 3.6 percent, it translates into a 2.68 percent increase in the property tax rate. And as I notice, you have slides in front of you, and that number does appear on your slide. This might be the version, this one doesn't have it, and I will make sure that that one gets updated. But currently, right now, based on this 3.6 percent property tax levy, when we factor in property assessment, when we factor in the equalization rates from each town, our current estimated budget and our estimated property tax levy, it translates to an estimated tax rate of 2.68 percent. So when we talk about reserves, for those who've seen this in the past, we have four reserves that we have made a decision to use that money to help offset and bring into our budget as part of a revenue. And they were the liability reserve, the insurance reserve, the unemployment reserve, the retirement contribution reserve. We have four reserves that we have held off and said, these reserves cannot be part of our operating because they have specific purposes. Our employee benefit reserve is essentially what would happen if the school district closed down tomorrow? What would our payout be to employees who had accrued time in our district? And we're required to have that in a fund by our accounting laws, and that amount is $1.2 million. We have a capital reserve that was established probably about six years ago. We had $7.3 million. We did use $1.9 million in the past project two years ago. Right now, we have $5.4 million. That reserve was set up to be able to be established up to $10 million. We haven't fully funded that at this time. Repair reserve has just over $57,000 in it, and that's a reserve that was established a number of years ago. It can be used for a repair project that doesn't generate state aid. It needs a referendum and certain type of vote to be able to use that. We've held it there, and at some point, when the time is right, we'll exhaust that and use that for a project. And last is our tax surchargeary reserve, which has 3 point, almost $3.5 million, and that reserve is established for property tax refunds when you have what's called Article VII's, a property tax assessment suit, and a court order that may reduce the assessed value. That fund is set up to pay those because you never know when they're going to come. Over the past several years, they seem to have increased. We've taken some steps to defend a lot of these cases with our attorney and with the town, and, but over time, the Board has received these at a meeting where we're transferring or establishing a payment to get rid of these Article VII's and to clear them. So when we look at those reserves, the four in the blue that I had identified, it's almost $14 million. In 2011, '12, we used $1.4 million of that. In 1213, we used $1,650,000 of that. And you'll see in 1314, '14, '15, '15, '16, the $3 million, $3 million, and almost $3 million. Those are the amounts that will be used right now in our five-year plan for money coming in as a revenue to reserves, as well as the remaining balance, which is really going to be our 1617 number as we move forward. I think at this time, we've kind of talked about really the overview and the numbers, and Mike, I don't know if you'd like to take questions, this portion, before we change gears?
Sure.
I know there's a discussion going on at the state level about a consideration for a smoothing factor, and I know it's being pushed by several superintendents for their budgeting processes to allow the TRS and ERS to be smoothed over several years, almost like mortgaging the future. Have we looked at our numbers to see what that would do to the budget if we were to elect, if that passes and they elect to go to the smoothing factor, what that might do to the budget?
Yes, I have. The hope is that if it is going to happen, it happens really soon. There has been a lot of talk that this might not be something that happens until April or May because they can't get the retirement systems to act quickly enough. But if we just think about those numbers that I was talking about when we said right now, we have 11.8 percent in our budget for teacher's retirement, and we're going to 16.5. If we were to level at 12.5, about 4 percent of $58 million, which is about $2.3 to $2.4 million, would come out of the budget for TRS. At the same time, if you looked at ERS, you're probably looking at 8 percent of about $15 million or another million, too. So our budget could decrease by $3.2 million if they leveled it at 12 and 1/2 percent. What does that mean on the revenue side? Even though there's no revenues built in, it really factors into that tax cap calculation. So we had a $3.2 million expense on the revenue. On the revenue side, if you go back to that slide, one point four million dollars is what we can exclude. So the difference, that one point eight million is purely being passed on with no relief to districts. Obviously, the one point four is also being passed on, but school districts have at least the ability to be able to use that number in their calculation. If it all went away, right now, we would have zero tax rate increase, probably a zero property tax levy increase. So it does have a significant, it does play a significant role. How they structure it, is it going to be as easy as it's taught? You know, there's a lot of talk. It could be twelve and a half for five years, and then they'll relook at it. Well, at the rate that it's increasing, I don't know how the districts will survive with two and three percent increases. Again, the first two percent that, maybe the year after that increases, if they don't change something, can't be used in that calculation for the tax cap. So it's being absorbed within your general funds budget as it sits today. And that has a significant, that has a significant factors in our calculation. I think there's, I've heard it both ways. It'll be a district-by-district decision. I think I've heard it could just be mandated. Truthfully, you know, everyone, every district's probably going to have to do their own calculations. But if you go to twelve and a half in thirteen fourteen, and you know it's not going to change for the next five years, that's nine million dollars of our one hundred and forty million dollar budget that'll be fixed. It's a significant amount of money. It's the most significant amount of money that's causing increases to our budget year after year. You know, we're going up two million dollars on nine million dollars, on seven and a half million dollars. It's a significant amount of money. So we are watching it very closely.
Just now, that if we didn't have those mandates, we could almost have a zero?
It would be real close because we'd be really reducing our budget by three point four million dollars, well over three million dollars.
Guess we better start doing some more mandate relief. Advocating for that.
What we've been trying to do is get the budget to a stable place because we don't want our community to have to be nervous that big spikes in taxes are going to be passed on to them. We want them to trust us to have conservative budgets. It's hard to do when you're having that kind of increase, that kind of significant fixed cost increase. So to stabilize it is something that, you know, we would consider should we be allowed, we'd take a look at it at that time.
Yeah, and I think that's, the timing is really going to be the issue because if it happens in April, it's going to be too late.
One of the things that I think is important, you've been talking about, the rate is increasing by four point four one percent. But that really is a thirty-seven percent increase in the cost to the district on that individual line item. That four point four doesn't sound like an awful lot, but in reality, it's a much more significant cost on that line.
Right now, the line sits, I think at about seven million or so, and it's going to go up two point three million, which is about thirty-something percent.
I believe now we move on to our building budgets presentation?
Yes, yes, we're gonna shift gears here. And the instructional team and principals will be up. Click on this, and you can sit right here.
Men and women in black?
Where's your happy colors?
I wore, I wore non-black, on purpose.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
But you're not Jack.
I'm not, am I?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brian, name and principal at Willink Middle School, and I'm actually going to kick off this portion of the building budgets. And by talking to you just a little bit about the process that we go through at each of our buildings. It certainly has been a process that has developed over the last few years, and it has come to a great place. And I really am excited to share about this process here tonight. We start back in November. And we just meet with our lead teachers and our building administrative teams and our, and we work through where the process is going to be for the year and the timelines, and we begin to put some of those timelines into place. So that in December, when the majority of our work is being done in December and January between all of our, in all of our buildings, we have that process laid out. And the first thing that the teachers will do is they will work with their PLCs and in their departments, and they will begin to vet out what are their needs, their individual needs. And they'll build that right from the ground up. They build that from, it's definitely a zero-based process. And each of us use a sheet that looks something like this. And again, you can see that it's built right from scratch each year. And then they take these sheets electronically, and then they will submit those to their lead teachers to begin with. And then the lead teachers will work with the administrators in the building, and they'll send those, and they'll collaborate, and they'll begin to have the first plans, so to speak, at those items. And when they do that, then they take and submit it to the building principals, and then we have another look. And each of us has a secretary that we all work with too, that's our business secretary. So between the building principal and the secretary and an assistant principal that kind of oversee the budget process for each of the buildings, we have another look. And then that's when, in the month of December, we go line by line, item by item, again, to look through and make sure that we're making every efficiency that we possibly can. The month of January kicks off the collaboration amongst the buildings, and it's separated by level, where the four secondary principals will get together, and we will look again at each of our different needs from our building and begin that process of working through some of those pieces together. Likewise, the elementary principals meet, and they go, again, line by line, talking about contractual expenses, library needs, and things like that, and if there's any way in any areas that we can make efficiencies as a district. So once that process is done, then we break out one more time by level, and Dave and I will meet, for example, and we meet together, and we look at our two middle schools and the needs that we have as an entire whole and as an entire program, and begin to prepare our presentation that we put together so that when we take and we present to Jim Fashara, and Adele, and Carm, and Shelley, and John, we have all of our ducks in a row, and we have everything all laid out, and we've really gone through a thorough, thorough process. And at that point, then we make our presentations in February, and we go again through each of those lines, line by line. You know, it's certainly something that during fiscal challenges that we've seen in the last few years, that through collaboration and communication amongst all of us, we have really gotten to an incredible place with this. And you know, the teachers have really appreciated that, and our staffs have appreciated that as well because they know that fiscal responsibility is something that we all take very, very seriously. So that's a little bit about the process that we all go through. And I think, like I said, through collaboration, we have gotten to a great place at the building.
So when we look at, through that process, what are we supporting in working with the board and the superintendent? We've been clear about setting it out that we want all students to be able to graduate college, career, and community-ready. And we've been consistent in how we communicate that from the inside out. So the why for us, again, is really grounded in students. So this budget supports our student learning, getting to that goal. And what's really important for our students, which we are working on, is developing a growth mindset in all of our students, again, ensuring that they're college and career and community-ready, and that they're able to persist through challenges. And how we get there, the board and the superintendent has go through a data investigation and process in the summer to establish our goals. The region's reform agenda, which has the three big parts, the common core, the APPR, and data-driven instruction. And then the structures that we have internally with the professional learning communities to continue to enhance and improve our instruction, and the collaborations and partnerships that we built. And then the what are some of the key rocks that we're working on to ensure that all of our students receive a guaranteed viable curriculum?
So just to expand a little bit on the what, the budget supports the resources and programs that we have. And so when you look at it from the perspective of K through twelve, you can see, as noted on the slide, that we're developing units that align with the common core. And so teachers are engaged in those conversations, working hard, and needing those resources to help support that. Also, from the K-12 perspective, we have taken a great deal of time, we've talked about it many times, about the nonfiction focus and what can we do to help engage our students in the complexity of text for nonfiction material? So what's the evidence in the actual text that they're reading? And how do they, how are they able to articulate what it is it needs to be articulated when they're reading nonfiction material? And again, preparing them for college and career. We also have, at the K-5 program, really taking some time to look at writing and increasing our students' ability to write and respond both fiction texts and nonfiction texts and questions. And so currently, we are using the Lucy Calkins Writing Workshop model. And from our point of view, as the seven elementary principals, really having deep conversations around that with our staff and common conversations that will really benefit our students as they continue to progress through the schools. And so now Dave's going to expand a little bit on the math.
Good evening, everyone. As you can see, the math expressions is our program, K-6. And what's nice about that is that articulation from the elementary schools coming into the middle schools, that there's a consistency to the program, that kids are coming in with a common understanding and vocabulary, and what's expected of them at each grade level is clearly articulated and aligned. And that certainly helps us with our implementation of the common core as they move through middle school and in preparation for the high school. Another piece that you'll see down there is the idea of high school courses taken at the middle school. And that really fits well with our growth mindset when we start thinking about kids challenging themselves and really taking that growth mindset to heart and challenging themselves by taking a high school-level course with middle-level support. And what does that look like in terms of the time, in terms of the teaming and the structures in middle school, and how that support looks a little different than what you might find at a high school? So we are encouraging to do that. And you saw that, I think, earlier in the year when we talked about the middle school numbers increasing and then our students taking accelerated courses, both in science and math. So those are good signs. And now Glenn's going to talk a little bit about the high school.
At the high school, you've heard growth mindset, you've heard college and career-ready, and persistence through challenges. And it really comes to a focus in the high school. The last three years, we have been focusing on increasing AP enrollment. We have gone from approximately twelve hundred enrollments three years ago to what will be next year, we're projecting twenty-two hundred enrollments. So we've gone through just huge growth in almost all areas of, in the courses that we offer AP. And in that, we're building that college and career readiness and the persistence through tough times. So if you go to the next slide, this is the total budget for all of the eleven school buildings in Webster, including equipment supplies, contractuals, textbooks, cultural arts, and school-wide enrichment.
When you look at here, each of the individuals' budgets through the process that we've been going through to ensure that all students receive guaranteed viable curriculum. And the way to do this is to ensure that the materials, again, you've heard about math expressions being through all of our K-six buildings. And the other emphasis that we've been working on is not only that, but having a clear articulation, K through twelve. So those are how we ensure that students do receive a guaranteed viable curriculum. And then to go back to Brian's point about, this doesn't happen by accident. It takes a lot of collaboration and communication amongst, you know, all eleven of our buildings and principals and the teachers to get it to this point. So we just wanted to really review the focuses with the board and the public and show what that expenditure is supporting, and that's really supporting students' learning and challenging courses, K through twelve.
Just as we've done with the budget in general, the school principals have been under some pressure from central office to reduce the building budgets over the last several years, and they have done a very good job. They really have ferreted out efficiencies, created efficiencies, ferreted out places where they could do more with less. And so this year, we've come to try to stabilize. So comparatively, we don't have the comparison up there. It is in the detail in your packet. This is pretty much a flat proposition from year to year. We've shifted some textbooks expenditures from the building budgets to the central office budget because we can get a better price when we buy in bulk with that, and it brings more consistency to us. But I do want to compliment the building principals for their hard work over the last several years. It has been tough to do the same program, even increase programmatic offerings that we're giving to students, especially at the high school, and stay with a flat budget or a reduced budget. So they've really done a wonderful job with that.
Questions from the board? Thank you. We'll move on to a discussion of the support budgets, which would include our superintendent's budget, business office, personnel, and public information, and community, school, and our safe.
I can begin with that. The superintendent's budget is flat. And so there is no increase in that budget. We are just continuing to have the same kind of expenditures that we had in the past without any increase.
The business operations budget, there's an increase of just over eight thousand dollars. A couple of different areas. Our district insurance has gone up slightly. Tax collections, we pay for the tax collections that the town and the county provides, the mailings, the paper that the bills get paid on. There's a slight increase on that line. And also, our health expense, other districts, has slightly increased. And those are costs we pay to other districts for the health services they provide for Webster kids who go to Prokio Schools in other districts. Next area is Carm.
Public information budgets, two different lines. The, we do see a decrease of ten thousand dollars in the negotiations and HR line. And that's mostly due to a decrease in legal fees as we are at labor peace, at least for the next eighteen months. So that's fantastic. And public information and communications, that line is up slightly, eighteen thousand dollars, and that is due almost entirely to our goal to revamp our website.
Thank you, Carm.
Sue and Mary Anne are here to talk about the community school pool.
The community programs budget essentially has two parts. The one part is the supplies and contractual area, which has remained fairly consistent now for several years. And this year, that piece is decreased by eight hundred dollars for our projected budget for next year. The other piece of our budget is the fee-based contractual instructor area, which we are showing increase, a projected increase next year of eight thousand dollars. That is a fee-based program, which is one hundred percent offset by revenue, actually. Probably about one hundred and twenty percent offset by revenue. So if we don't run the program, we don't have the expense. If we do run the program, we get revenue. So other than that, our entire budget then is just increased very slightly. We wanted to just take a minute to share a few highlights from the year. And we do have a sheet that we like to hand out, which summarizes that for everybody. But this year, our community programs, some people don't realize, but we support the Monroe Community College Extension Program that runs in our high schools at Schrader. And that program has reduced now, so there's only two extension sites in the county, it's Grease and Webster. And last year, we hosted thirteen MCC classes and a hundred and ninety-four students in our schools in the evening for this program. We also coordinate the driver's ed program with Bosse's, and that is leveled off now to close to three hundred students each year in that program.
We also run the Learn to Swim, the Water Size and Enrichment Courses. And this year, our numbers are holding pretty steady. As you can see, we have a thousand participants for the year in water exercise.
As you can see, we have 1,000 participants for the year in water exercise. The Learn to Swim program, if we ran two more sections, we would fill two more sections. And it runs year-round right now. We support the PE and interscholastic programs at both pools. And it's not just swimming that we support interscholastic-wise, but the football teams come in, the wrestling team is in, the ski team, the Alpine Ski Team, they were in their whole preseason training in the pool because there was no snow. So we try to get as many as we can accommodate, also the indoor track, use the, both pools. The other thing that we just wanted to highlight a little bit is our, the authorization of the American Red Cross and the certifications that we provide. We've completed 458 certifications of the community, and 173 of those were our athletic The community is still strong, 20,000 strong, that come in and out every day using the facility. We even have this little senior citizen UCA group that meet in the back hallway on Tuesdays. So it's used for more than just swimming. I also wanted to thank Adele for the kind words in the newspaper article, that was very kind. And we posted it in the staff room and at the front desk, so the staff were very much appreciative of that. And I just want to add, we couldn't accomplish what we do without the cooperation from the B&amp;G Department, the Athletic Department, the Tech Department, and the school band. And they come and pick up all of the recyclable cans at the end of every event we have. So that certainly helps them. And occasionally, we have to use their van when it's empty to store things, to empty the Aquatic Center to hold the big meets. So it's cooperation of everybody that makes it all work.
Also, just a real quick note. This past weekend, we hosted the New York State Boys High School Swimming and Diving Championships, and it went off fantastic. We probably had, I think we figured about 3,000 people coming through in three days. And hopefully, we'll see them back again soon.
Right, I do want to highlight that when that happens and that many people come into Webster, it's a benefit to our school. It's also a significant benefit to our community. They eat in our restaurants, they stay in our hotels, they spend money in our community. And that is something that our Economic Coalition pays close attention to and is very appreciative of the consistency, which with the Aquatic Center hosts these meets. And you're getting more and more of them. So getting a great reputation, and it is contributing to Webster where life is worth living.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, any questions on our support budgets? Go right ahead.
Sue and Mary Ann, on the state championships. I think this was the first time you hosted it.
For girls, yeah. For boys.
And just rave reviews. And I'll let go of Adele said about the revenue that brings into the community. But I just heard wonderful reviews on that, so congratulations to you two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now will move on to our instructional budgets. So I believe, Jim, you're going to do it? Or John?
This is coming up. John and Barb. Barb, are you coming up? No, John's going to do it. How about Joanna?
So, in our instructional budget, the biggest two changes, one is underneath the professional development, you see the increase, and that really is mostly reflected in an increase of the rent for the WPLC Center. And then where you see the largest increase, it's not actually an increase, it's taking the building budgets where they've had textbook and bringing it to Central for two purposes. One is that it gives us an economy of scale, so when we do purchase, we're able to purchase the materials at less of a cost for ourselves. And that alignment that we're talking about in the sense of a guaranteed viable curriculum when we're all purchasing the same materials, it's easy to order from one centralized location. So while it looks like there's this big increase, it's the movement of money from one line to another, and then there's the rent increase on that. So that's really that increase. And then probably the best increase in any budget is this underlines how much our students excel in academic competitions and also athletic competitions. So we needed to increase our budget because our students continue to excel and win awards and go to regional, state-level competitions. And we have a commitment to support our students through that. So not only are we challenging our students to go back to our focus, they're meeting the challenge and exceeding the challenges. So that's the support we're asking for increased based on this year's performance of our students. Our software and testing stays the same.
My turn. Good evening. In the art and music and marching band budgets, you'll see that we've held the line for a few years on our contractual expenses as well as on our supplies and needs. And a lot of those include entry fees for students into artistic and music competitions. And so those are covered as our entry fee piece, and John's budget takes over when they do very well, which we're glad about. We are asking for an increase in the equipment line for both our curriculum music department and our marching band. One of the reasons for this is that I believe that we've been a good partner in zero-based and before that, needs-based budgeting. We've reduced in the past five years in our music equipment line by 35%, and in the marching band line by at least 50%, and it's catching up with us. The prices in those equipment lines, the prices for that equipment that is, have certainly risen. And one of the reasons for the increase is in our string program. Our string program is really growing, and that means that we need bigger basses and bigger cellos. And we're also needing to replace old, used, time-to-be-retired equipment. And so you're seeing there the fruits of students' labors as well and their use of our equipment. And so we are asking for increases in those lines, realizing that we have kept those down over the past five years. So those are our increases.
Before we bring up athletics, just a question on textbooks, John. And I'm not sure how to even phrase this, but when we buy textbooks, we also get online access, correct?
For certain textbooks, yes.
For certain textbooks.
Yes.
Is there going to be, I'm asking you to look in the future, where textbooks become almost obsolete and it's the online?
Yes. I mean, when in the future exactly that point is? You see more of that right now in the fields of novels and those types of things. The textbooks are still in that development stage a lot of the times in the sense of it...
But the price won't go down as it becomes more online, will it?
That'd be a beautiful thing.
Something tells me that you won't get that wish, but I can't guarantee that. But, because I think they'll claim that there's enhancements.
This budget in the future, that line will probably not go down.
I'd hate to make that promise tonight.
Yeah. It's going to be subscription fees versus textbooks, but subscriptions for textbooks.
Yeah, well, I think one of the interesting concepts about that is, well, now you own the book, which is a different concept in economics, like I buy it, I own it. When you begin in the virtual world, you're really more under a lease policy because if you purchase through a server base and you no longer subscribe to that service, therefore, you lose all of your investments. So now if you make an investment in a book, so even long-term, as they move to more cloud-based type of materials, you have to remember that you have to continue to invest in that cloud. So economically, we may have to make decisions around what's best to actually have a hard book, or is it best to invest in a cloud? And how long do you invest in the cloud? Because my prediction would be that to get into their cloud would be relatively cheap. But then to continue in their cloud, they'll escalate their costs once you're in because you'll have to keep investing. That would be my guess, but I could be wrong.
Yes. Very interesting part of a budget conversation, sort of the futurist budget.
Yeah, so I, but...
Okay. That was a fair attempt. An answer to that question.
You also have one other piece that falls with that, Mike, is you remember textbook aid is 100% adable to...
Online isn't?
Well, anything that's used as a textbook is the technical definition.
My guess is if the push was go online because it's cheaper, I would think that the state will think about how much aid each child has to receive, and that could go down. Right now, at about $580,000 is where we run to maximize our state textbooks. You also have the library materials and the computer software aids that are all factored in there, that if you don't spend it, you don't receive it, it does show up on our revenue line. So it is an interesting point, and I think that if they get their wish within five years, they want that to happen, they haven't disclosed what was going to happen with the aid that districts would receive for what you're now going to buy.
Thank you. Any other questions before we bring up athletics? No?
Good evening, everyone.
Hello, Gary.
Just before we get started, I'd also like to comment on what I thought a great event, the state swimming tournament was fantastic. You talk about the economic impact to Webster. I made the unfortunate mistake of going to Bill Gray's at night. And my fish fry took about an hour and a half.
Oh, my gosh.
So absolutely, there is an impact to Webster, and it's a great one. Congratulations on a great tournament. I believe Section 5 Boys did an excellent job and won the state tournament, so congratulations to all. As you heard from many of the other principals and directors, athletics follows the same zero-based budgeting, meeting with coaches, and going through all the items that they need to run their programs. We work very closely with Jim and Karm in that respect. And as you can see, we have made some more efficiencies. Some of the items that are out of our control, our contractual ones, such as Section 5 officials, and you can see that there was an increase in that line for this year. We did look at some other contractual expenses, and we made some efficiencies there. We took a look at our uniforms, and I would have to say that the turf fields have helped out a little bit because I don't believe we're getting the wear and tear on some of our varsity uniforms, as I looked them over with our equipment managers. And so we made some efficiencies in that respect. But overall, I think, as you look in the past few years, we've kept our expenses pretty stable, even though our costs have been going up. We have, again, great teams, great programs this year. We may want to increase that line that John was talking about for state events and everything as we send more and more teams going on.
I think I spent all $10,000 up at Pot Stand this weekend, trying to get out, so...
That's a quick synopsis. Questions? Head off from the board.
Just one, you mentioned that the turf fields and uniforms. Are there other ways in which our turf field has helped us with our budget in other areas?
Certainly, we're staying in town. We're not going to, we're not going to rent their fields, and it's saved us quite a bit.
And that's showing in the decrease in that part of the budget?
It's been gradually showing up through the past two years that we've had the turf.
What they say on the revenue side also, Mike, is that we're bringing in a lot of Section 5 events, running the fields out, so that increases the revenue side of the budget.
Matter of fact, the community's starting to use our turf field this Sunday, so it's up and running and so forth.
The snow to melt, but...
Well, it's melted in the Thomas site, come on over.
It's warmer up north.
Sun's always out over Thomas.
Yeah, near the lake.
Lake effect.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So in total, the instructional budgets total $1,433,750, as you've heard tonight.
We'll move on to our pupil services and special education.
Good evening, how are you?
Hello?
Okay, for our special ed and pupil services budget, you will see that really it has potentially stayed flat and it has decreased. I think it's helpful for you to know that incorporated into the special ed and pupil services budget incorporates all of our health services. So all of our health offices, all of the supplies, materials, and equipment that's needed to support our health offices as a part of this budget. All of our supports, all of the services to provide the supports for special speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, our school psychologists and our school psychologists and school counselors. The budget supports all of the materials and supplies that they need to support our students to continue their growth and process. When, the one thing that really this portion of our budget does not include is the instructional aspects. We work closely with the instructional team to make sure that all of the supports and materials needed to focus on the Common Core and the college and career and community-ready partnerships, that all of those pieces are incorporated into that aspect of the budget. And the other large portion of our budget that is covered are our private school placements, the foster care placements, and the public school placements. And many of those costs are, we predict what those costs may be. We really have no control over many of those costs. So for example, our students who are in foster care outside of the district, we're not aware of that and the cost of their program until the end of the year. There is one addition to the budget that is a little, that is unique, and that is to support our Medicaid processing. I think you have been aware that Medicaid is a very cumbersome process, and the time and commitment that it takes our department to focus on the documentation, making sure that we are aligned with all of the state and federal regulations to support the Medicaid process. We have added monies to our budget to support that process. Questions?
Thank you.
I think it's important to note that with your budgeting, there's been an overall decrease to this budget.
That is correct.
$88,000. Thank you for those efficiencies, for working to do that.
Thank you. And I think, and the reason for those decreases, it is in the tuition area. And it is our continued goal to keep our students here in district. So I think to all the staff in supporting all of our students because it has been a continued focus for us.
Thank you, Sheldon.
Thank you.
We'll move on to technology. So I see Jim's moving up here.
So I'll be talking about the technical services operational budget. This year, we're looking at holding flat from last year. I'd like to point out that that, we're holding flat on the dollar amount, but our complexity and scope continue to increase. Online textbooks, I don't know. All the activities, as you hear from the other programs and the other folks from the district, our mission is to support them and to make the technology the best it can be to educate our kids and provide the best experience possible. So the demands continue to increase, and we continue to work hard to do that as efficiently as we can and be as effective with the technology we have, and to be smart about our purchases and deployments. Looking at that number, we're about $500 higher than we were in 2010, '11 budget. And at the same time, our level and complexity of technology has increased considerably. So I'm continually challenged by the superintendent and Mr. Frascher to keep those numbers where they can be, and we will continue to do that. That's really what I have. Any questions?
Jim, a quick question. With our technology budget...
With our technology budget, as we look to be as efficient as we can in course presentation, does our current technology have the bandwidth to be able to support doing some electronic instruction between buildings?
Yes. Again, depending on how you define that, but we've actually invested over the last few years. We have video conferencing capabilities that are being used between buildings now for instructional purposes as well as others, some collaborative tools that are in place now and we continue to look at additional ones.
Thank you.
Other questions for technology? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
We will move on to debt services.
This year's debt service budget resulted in a decrease of about forty-five hundred dollars. We have debt service for both our serial bonds for construction and for school buses. Most of those range from seventy to eighty percent reimbursement from the state. And those show up on our revenue line as building aid. One of the other things in this year's budget, we're going to use about six hundred thousand dollars that's of interest, that's sitting in our debt service account to reduce our debt service budget. And you'll see that reflected on page thirty-seven A. It's down about a hundred and fifty thousand from what we're currently using this year, which is seven hundred and fifty thousand. I guess I will say an exciting thing that is going to be coming up in two thousand fourteen. You may have been hearing the state talk about recalibrating, recertifying, they've used different terms, the interest rate on your debt. And that will be a direct reduction in building aid as time goes on. And what that means is the governor has put out a proposal which it's in the twelve, thirteen budget. It didn't happen and they haven't taken money away, but we're strongly hearing that in thirteen, fourteen, it's going to happen. And what that means is if you have debt that has an interest rate above the calculated average by the state, which is about two point two percent, I think, is the number right now they're using, that your interest calculation on your debt will be recalculated and you won't receive aid for that portion of the money that's above the two point two percent interest rate. Now recently, as recent as this last, at the end of last week, the state did put those numbers up. Our number is somewhere around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have two major borrowings that, as you look at, actually, if you looked at page thirty-seven B, it's the borrowings from the project of two thousand or as it's been refinanced, two thousand and four, and it's the second one down, there's about twenty-three million dollars remaining for the next ten years. And when we refinanced that in two thousand and four, the original was two thousand, when we borrowed that money, the interest rate was a sliding scale from about three and a half to five percent twenty years out, which at that time were very good rates. So now the state has come with this new proposal and they said that any borrowing that's more than ten years old would be impacted by this ruling. Our borrowing was, or our reborrowing was two thousand and four. They are using two thousand as the original borrowing date of this option, which means this would be eligible for a reduction in aid. Now, there's also a new regulation that came out that said the commissioner will accept waivers to this process. And we will be filing tomorrow a waiver because by IRS law, you can't refinance one of these unless it's at least ten years old. So the last time we refinanced was two thousand and four and we won't be able to refinance until two thousand and fourteen. So we'll be waiting to see where, what answer we get on a waiver. We've worked with our bond counsel and with our bond attorney to write the appropriate letters to try to get this waiver. Also, at the same time, in March of two thousand fourteen, we will start a refinancing of this one issuance, the twenty-three million. And right now, we're projecting, based on the rates that we think we'll get, that we could save about three hundred thousand dollars a year or just over three point three million dollars over the course of the life of this, which has eleven years more on it. So March of fourteen will be an interesting time. Our debt doesn't come payable until June of fourteen, but we won't be able, so we'll be able to start looking at it in March and hopefully reducing that interest rate to get closer to the state average. So our hope is to save some money for the district long term.
Questions? Thank you, Jim. We'll move on to buildings and grounds. So Blaine and Neil.
You could. You're going to start?
Good evening. In regards to the two thousand thirteen, two thousand and fourteen buildings and grounds budget, to let you know a little bit about us, we have currently twenty-two full-time maintenance staff. These include grounds, painting, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, energy management, preventative maintenance and general maintenance. We have seventy-four cleaners and custodians, seventeen sentries, two seasonal workers and approximately twenty-four summer helpers. As a team, our maintenance and custodial departments maintain over one point seven million square feet of building space and approximately two hundred and seventy-five acres of land. As we all know, there's approximately eighty-eight hundred students and fourteen hundred staff members. And as also, as previously stated, the community uses our buildings quite often. So we're pretty much open seven days a week at some of our facilities. Staff is responsible for the overall maintenance and repair, preventive maintenance and cleaning of both the interior and the exterior of the buildings. And then our sentry staff is responsible for creating a safe and overall environment for our students and once again for the community on a daily basis. Looking back, like the other departments, our department budget was created using the zero-based budget. Collectively, we met with all the principals and the directors to find out what the needs were. First of all, would impact health and safety and also curriculum and then the aesthetic things of the building. But the real exciting thing about our budget this year is, as we all know, the utilities, the gas and electric that heat and cool our buildings, you know, and we need for the lighting and to support our technology and everything else that goes into the budget. It's a big, you know, portion of what our budget is. But overall, I'm glad to let everyone know that we're going to be reducing our overall energy budget by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year. If we look back from the two thousand ten, two thousand and eleven school year, collectively our budget for energy was about three point one million dollars. Right now, we're sitting at about two and a half million dollars, so realizing our savings over, you know, six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars over the course of these past couple of budgets. And this is, everybody's responsible for this. Buildings and grounds staff, the cleaners, the custodians, the principals, the teachers, people building and scheduling our buildings because they communicate to us and we're even, we're able to use our energy management system to its fullest. One other exciting thing is last year, I mentioned that we'd be looking at some programs. Excited to say right now, we're working with a local engineering firm to get our buildings certified by the EPA for Energy Star ratings. We are very early into the process, but right now our numbers are looking great. So this is something that we're in the near future, hopefully we'll be rolling out and we'll have even more good news as we move forward. So overall, the buildings and grounds budget, we're going to realize a decrease of ninety-six thousand dollars and our overall budget will be four million five hundred and forty thousand five hundred dollars. And without answering any questions, or let Neil?
I just wanted to make a comment. I know Blaine probably won't say this, but since I've come to work there, he is really the driving force behind the energy savings. I know everybody participates, but as a kind of an outside observer, I just have to kind of give credit. I've seen it happen for five years and it's a lot of his work and direction and effort. Jim wanted me to mention real quick, I know the slide was earlier, the AED budget is flat this year. That's pretty much a fixed cost. It buys batteries for the units, the pads, pediatric, adult, training supplies, continues to maintain that program. So we're pretty much set as far as it's going up and down. We know pretty much now annually what that's going to cost us to maintain it. And we move forward. We purchased quite a few new AEDs last year. So from an equipment standpoint, as far as replacing, we're in pretty good shape. We had to and the company cut us some financial incentives to do that at the time. So that's where that is. And our security budget this year is projected to stay the same. Obviously, the board's aware that we're undergoing a pretty extensive review of everything we do, security. It's a little hard to determine where that's going to fall and what we're going to do, but both Jim and Blaine have been very supportive as well as the superintendent for our security initiatives and we somehow find a way to do what we need to do to make it work.
Questions from the board?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. We now will move on to transportation. Well, Scott?
All right, good evening. Real quick, we have with us tonight Jim Morris, our head foreman, our head mechanic foreman and Tom Honderoff, the assistant business manager here. Transportation. Sorry about that. Well, I knew Jill was out, so. The major focus of any school transportation program is a safe transportation of children. Our department has an outstanding record of busing over one point eight million students per year, traveling an excess of over two million miles and doing so with an exceptional record of cost effectiveness and safety. We have eight professional mechanics with over a hundred and thirty years of experience in the transportation industry. And our eight office staff has another hundred and twenty years of practice and understanding of the industry. In addition, the department has one hundred and sixty-three school bus drivers. District owns one hundred and twenty-one full-size buses and fifty-one small buses. We travel to fifty-three different sites every day, fifteen of which are right here in the district. The transportation staff is dedicated to making the children's bus ride an encouraging experience. Our enthusiastic team of drivers, office staff and mechanics are all committed to a safe, reliable service for Webster's families. The transportation budget lines have been developed through our zero-based budget process. The changes are highlighted as follows. You'll be happy with this one this year, Mike. Our gasoline diesel fuel line has decreased. Cost of fuel has increased from last year's budget estimate of three dollars and twenty-one cents to the current price, which is an average of three dollars and forty-one cents, was an increase about six percent. Now, that average of three forty-one includes the current price of ultra-low sulfur diesel number two, which is actually three dollars and twenty-nine cents, but the mix we have for the winter to prevent all the gels, gelling fuels, is mixed with kerosene at four oh four a gallon. So that was where we get the average of three forty-one. That's a consistent average throughout the school year. For next year, we'll be using an average of three forty-five a gallon and based on the estimated miles traveled, we'll use approximately two hundred and thirty-five thousand gallons for a total fuel budget of eight hundred and eleven thousand. Equipment contractual expense have decreased slightly to reflect the cost of operations as we continue to improve each bus's performance with our preventive maintenance program. Utility budgets have remained the same based on our current operational usage. The overall transportation budget is one million three eleven nine fifty, a decrease this year of thirty-six thousand five fifty, or about three percent.
So talk about why that decrease in the number of diesel fuel and the number of gallons. As you know, as part of the Full Day K program, we no longer have midday travel and midday transportation. So that number factored in, as we had talked to the board about back when we were talking Full Day K, we would have savings in transportation for the cost of fuel. We also have some savings when we look at staffing and the cost of staffing.
Questions from the board? I have one. We heard earlier today, we're going from ten to twelve years on the bus purchases. Sometimes when you keep, well, I'll use a car, you keep a car an extra year or two, the maintenance cost actually goes up and you sometimes wonder if it's actually worth keeping in the car that extra year. Is that going to be a similar situation with our buses?
Mr. Morris?
I think it depends on how they're maintained. I personally have no trouble going to twelve or thirteen years if you're on a firm maintenance program from day one when you own the vehicle and follow that through its life. I have no problem with that. I think you either need to go to a twelve or thirteen or back it up to like a seven year where what you bring in on trade on your old one, the value's higher than a ten or twelve-year-old bus and it's almost a wash given what our state aid is. But I have no trouble and I have confidence we could go to a twelve, maybe a thirteen. And I think if we stay the course that we're at now with the program, we could do that and it wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Jim has improved on the corrosion resistance to on each of the vehicles through the preventive maintenance program. So where it used to be, the motors could last a long time, the bodies were rotting out and the structurals were rotting out, but that's not happening now either due to his program. Appreciate that.
That is an interesting question because we're not talking about bus purchases today. We'll be talking about it at the next meeting, but when I did meet with the team around bus purchases, that whole conversation came up because if you think about buying a bus that's a hundred thousand dollars and just getting seventy percent aid, out-of-pocket cost is about thirty thousand dollars over five years. If you turned around and sold that bus in six years, you would get much more than thirty thousand dollars. Downsizing fleets might think about something like that. In our fleet with a hundred and forty-eight big buses, a hundred and fifty, it'd be very difficult to buy that many because we have so many that are so far out. But if you were just starting out with a transportation fleet in a school district because you never had your own fleet, that is something you really should consider if you have a high aid ratio.
Like East Doran Aqui probably is in that situation.
Yes. And we have had conversations because we have a series of buses that are mid-aged that have been costing us quite a bit of money. They have been on a five-year plan that, or the five-year warranty plan and they'll be coming off of that. And we try to measure how much that's going to cost us in year six, seven, eight. And is that bus really should be getting, we should get rid of that bus even though it's only a seven or eight-year-old bus and keep the bus that's twelve or thirteen that has lower maintenance costs. And you have to do that analysis and we do look at that and Jim does a great job bringing the facts that really show that it makes sense. Again, we try to stay on that ten to twelve-year replacement cycle, which this would be maybe an anomaly to that cycle if we think about doing that at some time in the next year or two because the cost of that bus year after year may be more than. may be more than the cost of a bus that's 10 or 12 years old to continue to maintain.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Do you keep your cars 12 years?
Yeah.
I do remember it was, how many years ago did you begin that maintenance program? And we...
Three and a half.
Three and a half years ago?
Right.
And it's very nice to see it paying off and doing well. And, you know, we paid forward at that time to get this started, and now we're seeing it stabilize, which is great. Great work.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks. All right. That concludes our presentation. And I will ask if any of the board members have any general comments on what they heard tonight?
Said, the administrators that put the information in the packets together, I thought was extremely informative. That explains why I didn't have any questions. It was, I mean, it was really a well-put-together presentation.
I think we'd all echo that, Fritz. Thank you, administrators, for the nice job you did tonight. And with that being said, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Did we want to?
We can talk to you afterwards.
I'll move to chat.
Second. Thank you, all in favor?
All right.
Meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.